Good evening. For those of you that weren't here this morning, I'm going to repeat the same without sounding repetitive, but I will. I'd like to put a big commendation out for our firefighters. Oh, what a good job they did during our fire that we had. Contained it very quickly, which is very impressive. And again, many thanks to them. Also to our Public Works people down there. The crew did an excellent job of the Public Works Day. Everybody enjoyed themselves and it'll definitely be a return event next year. So, I'd like to give it up for them. I'd like to call this meeting, regular meeting of Council, Monday, June the 13th, to order. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda of the June 13th, regular meeting agenda as presented? Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammond, all in favor? So carried. Moving on to the minutes portion, may I have a motion to adopt the May 30th Public Hearing Meeting Minutes as presented? Counselor Butler, Counselor Ross, all in favor? So carried. May I have a motion to adopt the May 30th Regular Meeting Minutes as presented? Counselor Tripp, Counselor Ross, all in favor? So carried. Okay, moving on to our...
I have just a thought about that. I don't believe Counselor Tripp participated in that meeting.
No.
Oh, yes.
Because even though I read it, I wasn't here.
Yeah. I think I made a move there.
Totally, totally.
So, let me recall that. So, all in favor?
We need to be a mover.
Yeah, so you are the mover. Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammond, second or... Thank you. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Moving on to our written reports. May I have a motion to receive all the written reports from Council as presented? Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammond, Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have two motions on the table for tonight. I wanted to start actually with the second one first. I'll just read the motion first. Says, "Whereas Counselor Butler is appointed to the REC Commission as a representative of the Recreation and Culture Committee of Council, and whereas the REC Commission has asked for the establishment, sorry, for the re-establishment of this committee to facilitate other program opportunities for the city outside of the REC Commission mandate, therefore, be it resolved that as per Policy 307, staff bring back a report on the implications of such committee including membership, appointment methods, staff participation, financial resources, legislative and political authorities." And I have some comments built up, but I'll wait to see if there's a second or...
Are you asking for a motion to be appointed as a representative?
That would be up entirely to Council to appoint that, and the staff report that came back would make recommendations towards that.
Okay, so we have a mover and a second or... The reason I ask that question because the recommendations to staff now are that we're not going to have any representatives on anymore. To our CAO.
Mr. Mayor, just in respect to if I could get a little bit more understanding of the report on the implications of such a committee including membership, appointment methods, staff participation, are we asking, is Counselor Butler asking for there to be, this report to be prepared? And when would this report be expected to be delivered with Council? Does it become a priority of Council to get this report before Council, before it goes back to the Board? Because this is not, you know, we would want to be, if this looks like a pretty in-depth report, just want to make sure that we are understanding in terms of reference because the financial resources have not been included in this year's financial plan. And if we're talking about any additional pieces, that would have to be considered into a, an amendment to the financial plan. Further staff participation, workloads, appointment methods, committees including membership. This is something that the committee, if the committee is established through the REC Commission, through the Regional District, and our Council wants to participate with it, they could be asking Council to participate. But we don't want to be developing a REC Commission on behalf of the Regional District. If the Regional District wants a REC Commission and they want to have an appointment, then our Council can ask to have representation.
Counselor Hammond.
Yes, it appears that it looks like it's going to be a Committee of Council, which means that this Council would be setting it up as a Committee of the City. And if that's the case, would not the RBKB be the body that would come and request such a, make that request?
Counselor Butler.
Yes, speaking to the motion, I included the Policy 307 part because that is standard procedure in our policy manual. However, staff wants to proceed with that, I'm fine with. I just put that in because that was the requirement that is recommended under our policy. I don't want to burden staff with a huge report. I'd much rather see it kept simple myself. So if Council is fine with that, we could definitely keep the report a lot more simple. In response to Counselor Hammond's question, the REC Commission through Council's representative has asked for this question. They are prepared to come as a delegation if Council would prefer. I have an email that was sent to me by Brian Noble, who is a new representative on the REC Commission. He was hoping to be here at this morning's meeting, but couldn't make it. So his background is, he says, "I've worked in municipal parks and recreation management for over 30 years in three cities." He was the Director in Yellowknife, Whitehorse, and part of the Municipal Parks and Recreation Management for Calgary. Specifically, my responsibilities include facility management, recreation delivery, arts, culture, and community development." So those are his qualifications. And what he wanted to say to Council today was, "Those who work or volunteer in the field of recreation, arts, culture, environment, parks, and sport have always known the activities we run are a means to a bigger end result: the improved health of population and communities. Contributions of recreation, sport, fitness, art, culture, and parks for the purpose of this presentation, the term recreation below is intended to represent all of the activities just stated. They're essential to personal health, as active living is key determination of health status. They're key to a balance in human development. They're essential to quality of life, space, and place. They reduce self-destructive and antisocial behavior. They build strong families and healthy communities. They reduce healthcare, social service, and police justice costs. They are significant economic generators in the community. Parks, open spaces, and natural areas are green spaces which are essential to well-being and our environment survival. What benefits can be achieved by supporting the reinstatement of the City of Grand Forks Recreation and Culture Committee of Council? Provide the citizens of Grand Forks with the opportunity to express their recreation needs, and in a coordinated presentation to City Council, a review and recommended priority of resources required. Provide a coordinated recreational delivery system that will maximize resources available. Demonstrate to City Council and residents of Grand Forks the benefits of recreation. Develop goals and objectives for a coordinated recreation delivery system for Grand Forks to City Council on an annual basis, or more often if required." So the reason why we're bringing this to Council is because the REC Commission has a very tight mandate of what we're allowed to participate in. Within our budget, we're only budgeted for activities at the arena or the pool. And we quite often come up with ideas, or people come to ask with ideas, that they'd like to see developed within the community, like the frisbee golf course. For ultimate frisbee is one idea that we wanted to get involved in, but just couldn't because it wasn't in our mandate. And people like Brian, that have had experience with this in the past, say that usually the city itself would have either a recreation coordinator or a committee that would be able to handle these type of things and special events. And also, he said he's met with Sarah, and he was hoping that this could help take some of the workload off of her shoulders.
Counselor Ross.
I'm starting to look clear on that.
Just a second, Counselor Thompson. Go ahead.
Well, I wasn't clear on Counselor Butler's last statement. Could you repeat that, please?
I was just saying how the REC Commission's mandate is limited. It's primarily only funded to take care of programming for the arena and the pool. And there's a lot of other opportunities in the community that are being missed because we don't have a committee that can handle activities outside of them.
Counselor Ross.
Thank you. Seeing it's, we're using the word reestablished, I'd like to know when the last Recreation and Cultural Committee was actually a stand, was actually an official Committee of Council? And if there was, they already have a mandate, so can we resurrect that? I think it's a, I like the idea. I think there's lots of cultural and recreation opportunities in this community that it's actually frustrating me that we're not, we're not actually, I don't feel that we are promoting enough of. And I think we need to do that in concert with Area D, because right in our own backyard, which I'm pointing to right now, there's a lot of opportunities out there. And I think it's a great opportunity when we do this, it's also increasing tourism in our, and economic development in our community. So I'm not opposed with it in any way, but I think instead of reinventing the wheel, can we look at the previous mandate and how that was ran and see if we can just, we like, and we have expertise in our community, and I like to use expertise, which is in our community and willing to help. So is there, can we, I don't know, what's the protocol around resurrecting or doing some research into what the, our history is in this, for this committee?
You were just, I can't hear those discussions.
I think the discussion has ended right now.
I couldn't hear everything that comes in the wrong step. May I make the comment, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Well, I think that the, the idea of a, of a committee has merit. I would like to see this issue deferred until we've had an opportunity to meet with Area Director Russell at our Committee of the Whole Meeting in July. Because I think this is something that, that would encompass more than just the city. It is something that could either expand the mandate of the Commission, or perhaps have the Regional District create some, this kind of a committee. Because I think to add additional burdens onto our own staff to try to accommodate and deal with this is, is more than what, in my opinion, or my belief, that they can handle at this time. So I would certainly like to see this deferred and discussed with, with Director Russell.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
I can respond to that, because Mr. Russell sits on the REC Commission.
To our CAO, first.
Mr. Mayor, so one of the things that I've seen other communities do in respect to something like this is, when there is a question for this to determine what the community wants for recreation is, a process of, we're, we are undertaking the community, official community plan or sustainable community plan consultation. Part of that process could be to determine if there's a desire for a recreation and cultural feedback from the community. You can, we can, the city can develop a master plan, which would then create the process for budgeting and allocating staff throughout the next few years towards a project like this. I've seen it come back with, there's, you'd be really surprised at what the community will really tell you when they, when you solicit the feedback. One of the things that I was surprised to see from other communities was the desire for, for children's playgrounds to be established in certain areas of the community that you wouldn't have expected. There was other things that we, we were getting back was more information regarding dog, dog parks and access and bags and things like that. The recreation stuff that we traditionally think about is not necessarily how people are thinking today. So it'll give us a bit of a broader spectrum on that and solicit that feedback. So that's another option for Council to consider before you embark upon a committee that would, would actually have a specific mandate. You'd want to understand what that mandate truly is, and to get that information, you would want to solicit it from the public. So, just an option that I've seen Councils consider.
And as Counselor Butler had stated earlier, it might be preferable to have the REC Commission present themselves as a delegation, so all of Council can see whatever their recommendations are, rather again than have a representative, which we're, my policy is deviate from that. As we're doing with Boundary Museum was the same, they recommended through their Board of Directors that a representative be on there. But the requirements are if they present themselves, that's why we have Committee of the Whole Meetings. Counselor Butler.
Just in response to Counselor Thompson's query, Mr. Russell, the Regional Director, does sit on the REC Commission Board. He was present for this discussion and vote, and is, to my understanding, from what was discussed in the meeting, is in favor of this motion. I mean, he'll obviously be here at our Committee of the Whole Meetings from now on, so we can discuss that with him further. But I think it's unfortunate at this time, you know, to burden the REC Commission with having to come. I mean, they have offered that they will, but you know, they've spoken through me to ask Council for this. They were pretty clear in, in their request. And I did try phoning Patrick O'Doherty. He apparently was our previous representative on the Recreation and Culture Committee. I didn't receive a call back from him, but Jean Roberts thought that perhaps he was the last one that was representative of that committee. So I guess staff would be able to look and see the mandate of the previous committee, and it would be quite simple. It wouldn't be a huge report then.
Was it not Michael?
No, the Recreation...
The Recreation and Culture Committee of Council? Before, for whatever reason, it was dissolved. I don't know if it was because there was election maybe, and the new representative didn't take it on? I don't know.
So probably referring it to the next meeting when we have got together with Director Russell, we'll be able to clear all this up. Probably be the better way to do it. Counselor Hammond, do you have a comment?
I was just kind of going to suggest that rather than bring the whole REC Commission out, that yes, Director Russell, seeing as he sits on that board, can explain what it is, he may have some knowledge of what the previous mandate was.
Exactly. Good point. Counselor Ross.
But if this was a Committee of the City of Grand Forks, then I wouldn't assume that Director Russell would know what the history is. There should be some records of minutes or some information in City Hall, in this building, that is, that should be easily accessible for us. I still think it's a great idea to start looking in how we can better develop cultural and recreational and environmental opportunities in our community. I would just say, the standalone, the therefore be it resolved has to be a standalone. Therefore, staff bring back a report on the implications of, of the Recreation and Cultural Committee of Council. And take up the word such, because that doesn't, if you read that as a standalone, it doesn't, it doesn't mean anything, because you'll, you get rid of the whereas as we were asking it resolved.
Your worship, the council members, please use their mic. I'm having problems hearing.
I apologize.
Is it working? Can you hear me?
Can you hear us now?
Yes, I can.
So our CAO was asking for a timeline on this too. I wouldn't expect it for the next meeting, but, and we, as we only have one meeting in July and then one meeting in August, I think our meeting in July is at the end of the month. Would that be, near the end of the month? Would that be a reasonable timeline? It gives over a month's time to have it ready. And it would just be, like you said, resurrecting the, the previous document to see what the, what the previous mandate of the committee entailed.
To our CAO.
Mr. Mayor, so I'd be happy to bring any information that we have back from the committees. I think going back to the implications of such a committee, that could be a wide scope. I think just bringing, if Council would like to see the information, and then we could maybe develop the conversation with our Director Russell, that would then take it into the next level to determine what is it that you're really looking to achieve with it? Because understanding what they've done in the past, what their terms of reference was moving into the future, and then having that collaboration with Director Russell, maybe something that would develop, maybe something that Council might want to seek some other opportunities into the future. So understanding what you have, first of all, all of Council's aware of that for that Committee of the Whole Discussion. So we'd be happy to go through the archives and print off the information and bring forward the minutes and whatnot, bring it forward to Council, so you have this part of the agenda package, and then you would be able to have that discussion.
And discuss it with Director Russell.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we see what the terms of reference and what the needs are, and we're not duplicating the process.
Exactly.
All right, so we had a motion on the table, but I think we can defeat that motion.
I thought we were going to have the staff bring us back a report.
But the whole motion was read out.
The motion at this point is just to follow procedure from our, sorry.
Just to follow procedure from our policy manual, and the first step in this procedure is for staff to bring back the report. We're not voting at this time on establishing the committee. As per our policy, this is the first step in that policy, for staff to bring back the report. And at that point, once Council has the information, then Council votes on forming the committee or not, and appointing people to the committee.
Counselor Hammond.
I'm confused, because the motion reads, "Whereas Counselor Butler is appointed to the REC Commission as the representative of the Recreation and Culture Committee of Council, and whereas, etc., etc." So it, it doesn't just say that the staff will bring a report back of the previous Committee of Council.
Are we striking that portion of the motion?
So you would prefer the motion to be worded that, "As per Policy 307, staff bring back a report on such a committee." And leave it at that.
And to be discussed with Director Russell.
Bring back a report on, on Recreation and Cultural Committee.
To be discussed with Director Russell, see what the outcome and the needs would be.
If I can interject, Justice bring back the report on the history
Yes.
Of the, the Recreation and Culture Committee of Council.
Yes.
I think that's all we're asking them to do, and as I'm hearing the discussion, and that would be my recommendation as to what the resolution should be.
So right now, we have a motion on the table. The best thing is to be a withdraw or defeat it, and then move on to a new motion.
We'd like to vote on the amendment to the motion, and then we will vote on the entire motion.
So what is the amendment?
Counselor Thompson, I believe you just stated that you would like to have staff bring back a report on the history of the Recreation and Culture Committee of Council to the July 18th meeting.
That would be my amendment to your motion, yes. I will make that motion.
Okay, and I'll second your amendment.
So all in favor of the amendment? So carried. So now back to the original motion.
You have to vote now.
Favor?
The original, you, you vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the amended motion.
We can re-debate, we can debate the amended motion now.
You can.
Yeah, you can, if you wish to. No.
They're voting on the amended motion.
So all in favor of the amended motion? Anyone opposed? So carried. So now, may I have a mover to receive?
Mr. Mayor?
Two more.
Yeah, I have two motions on the floor tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. My second motion that I was bringing forward tonight is something that we've discussed previously at Council, and it is on our 20-year budget that was presented this morning with regards to the sledge removal from the sewer ponds. It was on the budget for $715,000 for the recommended geotube procedure to remove the sledge. So my recommendation here says, "Whereas the city will soon begin work on the budget for the 2017," oh, on the, on the budget for 2017, "And whereas this budget will most likely include a costly remediation for the sewer ponds using geotextile tubes, therefore be it resolved that Council strike a committee to look into environmentally friendly, cost-effective alternatives for sledge remediation in the sewer ponds. And further, as per Policy 307, that staff brings back a report on the implications of the committee including membership, appointment methods, staff, participation, financial resources, legislative and political authorities." And again, that's just because that's the statement in our policy manual of the proper procedure. So, yeah, I'll leave it at that unless I have a second or...
Counselor Ross, you second it? Counselor Hammond.
Yes, I thought this was brought up at the last Council meeting that we had, and it was decided that staff were already looking into the alternatives for the sledge remediation, and that you had made a decision that no such Council would be struck, because that was, we weren't going to get involved with staff's responsibilities.
Exactly. That was my recommendation to Council, that we have confident staff that are taking care of this, and at this point in time, I don't feel there's a committee necessary until such a time that staff completes its work on this. Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the city's expense, we often go to conferences. Like I went to the Sustainable Communities Conference in Ottawa this year, and I bring it up all the time, because I learned a lot of interesting things, like solar-powered street lighting that operate with LED lights. And I brought that back, and I handed that to Mr. Reed. I also learned about some wonderful new sewer and water pipes that are being used. And, you know, there's, it's a, there's a trade show with purveyors of environmentally sensitive and sustainable products that they offer to the city. So I think it's incumbent upon us as counselors to bring that information, share it with our city, share it with our staff, and see, you know, if it's something that they might entertain. I think that this is an opportunity for us to look at biodigesters, and we have learned a lot about biodigesters at several of the conferences that we've attended, that this is a form of biodigestion using an anaerobic, anaerobic, I think it's more of an aerobic system of, yeah, like biological digestion, using bacteria, I believe. So if, I, I, you know, I just think these are great ideas, and if we can just, I don't know if it's a committee, it's a matter of sharing the information with our staff that we get when we get, we're out there. That's what we're supposed to do, get that information and, and bring it back to staff. I'm not sure, Counselor Butler, if we need a committee, but we certainly can pass on that information to our staff and hope that, you know, and I would like to hear, sometimes I, I would like to hear, like, when I bring something forward, is, has it been entertained? And if not, why not? Because then it's a learning, a learning opportunity for us as well.
Exactly. Well said. That's my opinion. Bringing different views and different ideas from trade shows executive, which I have too, sure, is great, but do we really need, I concur with what you said, do we really need a committee to do this? This is my only apprehension on this. Counselor Butler, and then to our CAO.
Well, from my understanding on this, staff has, you know, looked into this, and they have decided to go with the geotextile tubes. I don't think that they're looking into this any further. I think they've kind of made their decision on what to go with. And I'd just like to see some more time invested in looking into alternatives. But as, you know, Counselor Thompson pointed out, staff is overloaded with work, and they, they really don't have the time to go back and to look into these alternatives, to do the research, contact different people, do the legwork here. I mean, they've got other things on their plate, and a committee can take the time to do those things that staff right now just doesn't have the time to do.
To our CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before, we, we had a report out there from our engineers that talked about the process that they would recommend, but that was not anything that was defined in process. Council did not move that that was going to be the process they were going to undertake. If there are other opportunities out there, biodigesters, or, or there's conversion into gas and fuels, and there's other things that they're looking at now, those opportunities can be sought, and an RFP, Request for Proposal could be put out. If there is such a process that we could use in this climate, we would definitely want to look at that from a feasibility perspective. You know, from, from the city's perspective, we heard from our professional engineers, there's other things that come up, that have come up recently, such as the First Nations Agreement and the respective process in respect to land application, because there was going to be some challenges because of the order injunction as to the merit, the First Nations Group in merit, that were challenging the Regional District of Central Okanagan on the deposit of materials from their, their, their location.
Spreading biosolts.
Spreading biosolts and land applications. So, so when we get to that, there is more that has to be discussed, because once we put it into the geo-tubes, if we were to use the geo-tubes, that would only be getting it out of the pond. Somewhere along the line, it has to be put somewhere. And, and that process is one that we don't want, really want to have to undertake, because once we move into that, it is going to be not in my backyard, not ever. And not, and that will be the conversation. So if there is that opportunity, and we look at this through the, our RFP process, once Council approves funding for this, what we would do is we would go for Request for Proposals, and Council could ask for us to bring back the options to see what they look like. Because it's... Because it is an interesting process, because it is going to involve the community, it is going to involve multiple stakeholders. It is going to be one that is going to affect the, potentially affect the aquifer. It could potentially affect the forest industry. It could potentially affect First Nations. It could potentially affect recreational users. When the land application is used, I mean, it's not a glorious process. They put it into the hopper and they spray it out into the trees for fertilizer. I mean, I've seen it that way. So council would like to probably see that before we undertake that because I can't imagine council wanting to sit there and say we've just heard and this is the process we've accepted and therefore you're now going to see this happening in your neighborhood. I can imagine the councillors would be mortified if they saw that. Especially if some of the suggestions that I've heard, like there's somebody suggested, why don't we apply it at the airport on the peripheral of the airport? And I was like, wow, I don't think that's going to go well. And they said, what if we did that land application in the forest? And I said, I don't think that's going to go well. That's going to be a decision staff does not want to make. We would love to have council make that decision because staff are going to be challenged with that because it is going to come back as, it's going to hit the fan. And literally it will. But it's something that we want to discuss. So if it is going to be a near and dear sensitive topic, we would like to do is have that discussion, look at it in 2017 and then maybe we can elaborate on the process where more information will come back to committee, the whole on it because it is going to be a bigger undertaking. And I would think that your committee process that you have here, you would just ask staff to bring forward more information so everybody can participate in that discussion rather than a minor group of council.
Thank you. Counselor Butler.
Yeah, previous councils had quite a few committees. Committees are quite a common thing that is formed through Robert's Rules of Order and most councils have committees to look into different things. The councillor from Montreal that I spoke with, she formed committees for all sorts of things and she found them quite effective, especially as a way of community involvement. We do have a lot of really well-qualified people in our community that are retired from different positions that would like to contribute. And this is a way of tapping into their resources and doing public outreach. It doesn't mean that council has to accept the recommendations that come back from the committee. And the costs for the committee would really just be one staff member, once a month, to take the minutes. That's the only statutory requirement that I'm aware of is for a staff member to take the minutes for those meetings. So I don't see it being a time burden or a financial burden on staff and I think the benefits to be gained from the increased research and participation far outweigh the strain that would be put on staff.
To our CAO.
Mr. Mayor, and I can appreciate the councillor's comments, I just would like to caution us on it's not just a simple burden of minutes, we must post them, the agendas have to be completed by a specific time period to be posted for the public's viewing prior to the meeting. These are specific timelines that must be met and in the past, one of the reasons that council looked at dissolving some of the committees because of the the volunteers that were trying to meet their timelines, staff was burdening them with making sure, because they couldn't have their meetings without everything being completed. And then the minutes back to our organization to be posted as well. So it may sound like a small amount of time, but when we're trying to cut down on the operating cost of the organization, those are the little pieces that chip away at the overall operating cost. So it's something I just want council to be aware of. I'm not suggesting that committees are not effective, I'm just suggesting that it wouldn't be the minor amount that you're talking about. You're probably looking at a few hours, maybe five hours a week in relation to that, depending on the work we're coming up to because there is other things such as we've seen with committees such as the D E A R committee where they were organizing council, organizing additional meetings. There was more minutes coming back and the staff time to chase down the minutes and the information. It's great if everything works perfectly, but when people are volunteering, it's hard for us to put pressure on volunteers.
I could just weigh in on that one. The other situation as I understand it is right now it's work in progress with staff and that. So my recommendation would be, once we get these reports, as you said, back to council and if they don't prove appreciable to council or beneficial, there's always that option that a committee could be formed, should it be necessary. But I think at this point, we should see if somebody's already working on it, why duplicate? Counselor Butler and then Counselor Hammond.
Yeah, we don't have an environment committee anymore, do we?
No, I have an environment liaison, which is me.
Right, I mean, this would be something that the environment committee could even take on if that committee were to be up and running. And as far as doing up agendas, that's something that can be done by the council member, passed on to staff to review before posting. Agendas can't be done up by anyone and staff can check them over and make sure that they meet all the requirements so that the workload can be cut down for the staff member.
Counselor Hammond and then Counselor Ross.
Yeah, I don't disagree with councils. I sit on committees, I sit on several of them myself. And they are good for compiling information and but in this case, if the city were to put out an RFP, let the people who are in the business do the work, let them come to us. Because once the city puts out an RFP, if it's provincial-wide or even national, those people that are doing that kind of work should be coming to us with their ideas and their suggestions and then we can take a look at it, staff can take a look at it. But in a situation like this, I would say let the contractors do the work and come to us.
Thank you. Counselor Ross.
Yeah, I've actually considered bringing forward a motion to strike an official environment committee again. There has been some expression of interest from people in the community who've wanted to re-establish it. The reason I haven't done it is I just felt the burden of load upon staff seemed to be something that just was, it was bad timing. I agree that it's something, especially if we start looking at biosolids spreading within our community or in Area D, then with or without a committee, you're going to hear from people who have extreme environmental concerns about spreading the biosolids. I'd like to circumnavigate that by dealing with our biosolids in an environmentally friendly manner and inexpensively as well. So I don't know, it's a bit of a conundrum. If we, if the staff currently has the information needed for sledge remediation in the sewer ponds, perhaps if we could just hear back on from Mr. Reed on his and perhaps Mr. Clark as well and just say, have you looked at it and, you know, like it's
Where are we at with the options?
What's out there, what's being done in other communities? I mean, we hear about Montreal and Montreal, how many millions of sledge do they actually pour into the St. Lawrence River this spring?
How would that work?
Yeah, so it's obviously an issue for a lot of communities. I'd like to hear back from staff.
So if I understand this right, staff is working on it, plus we have RFP out also.
No, we have, we have a report that came in from our consulting engineers on it. The engineer provided a report. If council would like, I could have that report re-presented to council or we could present it from staff to bring it forward for council's review and provide comments on it. But we would be doing this for the, we'd be talking about this in the 2017 budget year because right now we're planning for the 2017 budget year. We're just undertaking all the expenditures that you approved this year as part of the plan, so we're working on those ones right now. So if council would like that, we could bring it forward and council could look at it and then going into the budget year, we could talk a little bit more about how it would apply and council could then be, kind of prepare themselves for the budget discussions and then in 2017, as we move through that collaboration with the community, there may be a point in time where council would want to look at, maybe there is a committee struck for the application of the product, should there be application. But if there is no solution that the organics will be eaten up with an aerobic process and there is going to be some land application, I would strongly encourage a committee of council, I'd recommend it to the mayor because if there was that, you'd want the recommendation to come back. But regardless of how we do that, it will be something that you would discuss in 2017. And I could bring the report forward.
So the environmental aspect of it would probably be more.
We need to think about it now.
Yeah.
So it's something to think about. Counselor Hammond and then Counselor Butler.
Maybe we could put it out there as a contest. Company that comes back with the most creative and environmentally friendly concept will win the award for the job. And try to get some new state-of-the-art ideas coming forward.
Counselor Butler.
I like the way you're thinking, Counselor Hammond. It's a go-getter kind of attitude. Let's go out there and get the ideas that we want. If we sit back and wait for them to come to us, there's hundreds of communities across Canada and I haven't seen anybody with solar streetlights knocking down our door yet, although we know it's out there. So there's many great opportunities out there. Let's be proactive, let's go out and find them and now is the time because this is when we're preparing the budget for 2017. So if council prefers not to strike a committee, maybe we could just start and I could amend the motion to say that we ask for a report back from staff for the next committee of the whole meeting that states our our process or progress
Our goals.
and the research that has been done up until this point by staff, just update us on what's going on.
Do you have a second or please?
Or does somebody want to clarify that before?
Just what the goals and the objectives are. We need to see where we're going to go with this.
Maybe, I think we need to defend, that's not a friendly amendment, I think we need to defeat that motion and to put another ocean on shore.
Somebody would need that.
I'm going to call their question.
I'll just remove my motion from the table if the secondary is okay with that and I can put forward a motion or would you prefer Counselor Ross?
No, you can put forward.
Okay. So I'll put forward a motion that staff bring back a report to council at the July 18th committee of the whole meeting with an update as to the progress that has been made into research of the sledge removal from the sewer ponds and any other options other than geo-tubes that are being considered.
May I have a second or Counselor Ross?
Just one.
I just wanted to say something that our CAO alluded to is that staff would prefer council to make the decision on the land application because they don't want to take the, I can't use that word, they don't want to take the flag for it. So, yeah, it would be better if we could come up with something else and not have that have to deal with that issue next year.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Counselor Thompson, I'm assuming you're voting in the background.
Yeah, I am.
I think she's interested in polls.
All right, moving along now to, wait a minute now. Okay, may I have a motion to receive the written reports? Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammond, all in favor, so carried. Now moving along to the verbal report from council representative to the regional district of Kootenay Boundary, that would be myself. The meeting attended was the Boundary Economic Development Meeting. Some of the items, it wasn't very much pertaining to our community, but I'll put it in here. We had a delegation from CVAL, which is the Columbia Basin Alliance for Literacy. Sheila Dobie, she put out an excellent presentation. There's a PowerPoint which would be available to everyone. A great discussion on the literacy issue. Again, anyone that wants a PowerPoint copy of it, I have it. Then we discussed the get in the loop and that was deferred to the Chamber of Commerce for further analysis. We also had the development of the Boundary Trails Master Plan. That was quite a lengthy discussion and there were a couple of phases to this one. And what transpired was they were putting it out for proposal for a contractor for this. And then it was going to go to stage one and at that point, phase one, would be decided if it would be continued at that point, to see if there was a feasibility for it. Too long to get into at this point here. There was also a discussion on the shared agricultural liaison services between the RDKB, the RDCK and the RDEK and the CBT. Again, not really pertaining to us, but it was in there. What does, did pertain to us more so was the, there was a letter from the Boundary Horse Association, a letter of thanks to Community Futures, to Wendy and Sandy for the letter gathering community information and advertising for a mixed animal vet in our area. And other than that, there were general discussions at that meeting, but nothing really relevant. So that would be my report for this evening. May I have a motion to receive the verbal report? Counselor Ross and Counselor Hammond. Go ahead, Counselor Ross.
I know CVAL does a huge amount of work in our community. I know many volunteers working with literacy, not only with children but adults and also putting on programs for computer literacy. English as a second language, settling immigrants into our community, into the region. Sheila Dobie has done a huge amount of work for CVAL. And I would just like to acknowledge that work that Sheila's done. She's leaving CVAL, she's finishing now. And I think Sheila is a huge loss to the community. She's leaving the community, she's moving to South Spring Island. She's volunteered here in Agricultural Society. She started the seed bank in our community. She's worked in so many capacities, which was one of the founders of the Kettle River Food Co-op. And I just would really love it if somehow the city could acknowledge these really valuable volunteers that we have here. Sheila's, it's going to be a big loss to our community when Sheila leaves, which is soon, this summer.
Thank you. She did an excellent presentation.
Wasn't she recognized as a volunteer of the year last year?
Yeah.
Counselor Thompson, are you still there? Hello?
They're a key to the city.
No, I didn't.
Is there, is there a guy? Do we have keys to the city?
Yeah.
Do you do that?
Yeah.
Give her a key to the city. Did you get your key open?
No.
Okay. Well, it's a
Hello?
He's a key to CVAL.
Good evening, Counselor Thompson. Got a very sensitive trait.
That's okay.
All right, so we received the, I guess you heard the verbal report from the RDKB.
Yes, I did.
And it was done. So we're moving on to the recommendations from staff for decision. First item is the 2016 Local Government By-Election Report. And the recommendation is that council receives the attached report on the 2016 Local Government By-Election for the City of Grand Forks as submitted by the Chief Election Officer, Diane Heinrich. May I have a mover? Counselor Ross. Counselor Tripp. All in favor?
What would you do if we voted no?
I would leave the room. So carried. Our next item is the Policy 308, Council Code of Conduct. The recommendation is that council adopts the Council Code of Conduct Policy Number 308. Counselor Ross. Counselor Hammond. Discussion, Counselor Ross.
I'd like to, council to entertain a motion to refer this, it's a really Oh, sorry, sorry. I would like council to entertain a motion to refer this. It's an important, it's an important policy. It has a lot of ramifications. I don't think it should be rushed. I would like to refer this and have it some work done on it and brought back for July 18th, Council of the Whole.
I'll second the motion.
Counselor Butler, any other discussion?
There is no discussion on refer.
All in favor?
Yes, you can.
I hold in favor.
So carried. Moving on to our Chief Financial Officer. The Financial Plan Amendment for Water Rates Analysis. The recommendation is that council amends the 2016 financial plan to include a comprehensive water rates analysis for $25,000 to be funded by water surplus. May I have a mover, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second or? Counselor Hammond. Discussion. Counselor Hammond.
Okay, for this analysis. Okay, so this is going to replace the Water Rates Committee, is that correct? Or is this, this is?
There is no more Water Rates Committee.
Right, so is this this analysis by Urban Systems is going to replace what the original Water Committee, Water Rate Committee had been established for? No?
No. No. To our CEO.
Mr. Mayor, the reason we would undertake a comprehensive rates analysis is almost like doing the, very similar to what we do when we do the tax rate analysis. Looking at this, the Water Rates Committee wouldn't have been tasked with this. If they were a committee sitting, they would have been presented the information and then Committee of the Whole would have been presented that information and then it would have been moved on to council. The rates are a very sensitive process to undertake, the rates analysis is not, you know, it just, we're just set them at the base of this. We have to make long-term projections. We have to look at the, we have to look at the overall implications to whether it's economic development or the use of water based on the consumption data that we have. The, the process is, there's so many different variables to this. It is us meeting some expectations that are put onto the community and it is the responsible way to do this, to make sure it is a fair and equitable system that we currently have. I believe that there is some holes in our current system that we need to look at based on the flat rate process. We have the meters in place. It doesn't mean that council's going to be adopting everything what we, that the consultant brings forward. The idea behind this, that council would see a variety of options to consider. So this may be, an example that might be a, a different rate for trailer parks versus single-family homes that would be based on consumption and there might be a fixed rate to be connected to the, to the water system and then a consumption fee to basically enhance consumption, or people to be using less water, to encourage people to use less water. Those varieties will be put forward to council, you'll probably see maybe 10 or 15 different options that would be looked at according to our financial records as well, because the financial analysis has to be done according to our 20-year plan as well, so it would have to match that. The overall analysis would be a, an undertaking that would again be presented to Committee of the Whole and then on to council.
Was this not already a proposal put forward at one point when a new Water Rates Committee was going to be established, there was going to be professionals brought in to advise them on, I think this was a discussion.
Yes, we had this, we had this discussion approximately six weeks ago and, and it was discussed with council and, and now it was at Committee of the Whole now, or it was introduced at a council meeting and, and now it's back again before council for their consideration.
Counselor Tripp?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry to have to try and backpedal here and catch up a little bit on information that I don't really, you know, haven't been privy to. But I just wondered, why was the Water Rates Committee disbanded? I'm sure that, this has all been discussed and so I'm sorry to have to take up time here with that, but I guess my question would be, would the Water Rates Committee have been able to provide enough input into this process along with the advisor, whoever that was who was going to be coming in, to be able to establish some kind of rates? I guess one of the things that puzzled me a little bit here in the Urban Systems document was they said here, Urban Systems will rely on the city to provide input on what the forecast revenue requirements over, would be over the next five years. So I just thought, well, if the city is already going to be providing that input, would the committee have been able to come up with something along with this advisor as opposed to having to have to go back to a, you know, an actual survey again?
For one reason why I closed the committee down was basically because of the timelines, because the project was not going to be completed until the end of July and the duration that this committee had been in place was the fact that we weren't sure anymore if certain members were still even here, would they still have been interested in being in the committee? So the committee was dissolved with the intention, once the project was complete or near completion, we would either reestablish a new Water Rates Committee and seek out the same individuals that were on it, should they wish to participate again, or new ones. And that's the main reasoning behind it. And then we would also have a professional involved to help guide the Water Rates Committee. This is where it came from, unless, Mr. Allen has more information?
No, Mr. Mayor, I think we're bang on. I think the only thing that I would add to that is, just an example of analyzing the rates is what is going to be the impact on industry, what's going to be the impact on commercial. There are so many considerations that we have to look at and balancing that process and council's tasked with that decision. And that decision requires a comprehensive analysis. There is, there is quite, quite a bit at stake for council when it comes to this, but I would not, I would not recommend that council put it out to the community for their decision on it. What I would actually recommend is if, if council wants to solicit more feedback on it, they could, from the community, but I would recommend that the rate structure be set by professionals that consider the long-term impact, because the last thing you want to see is your utility go bankrupt, because you'll be the people making the decision on that. And if you make your utility go bankrupt, you will have to catch up the following year or the years after that. So it is something to be considered.
And as second follow-up, I would say then possibly there might not be a need for a committee this time around. It's always the option that could be brought before Committee of the Whole. So there's many options at this point, so we're not really committed to immediately form another committee, but that option is still there. Counselor Butler?
Yeah, originally the letter that was sent out to residents said that we'd be doing a year of mock billing before the billing process was implemented. So we do have a year to come up with these rates. I'm a bit concerned with the report here that it would cost 20, so I'll just wait till the mayor's finished. I'm a bit concerned with the $25,000 to $45,000, depending on how much public consultation the city wishes to complete. I think public consultation is important, especially if we're not going to have a committee. And I'm wondering if this could not be put out for tender, also to see if there's other companies that can come in cheaper for us than $45,000 with public consultation, because considering what a contentious issue this has been, I think it's important that we do it right this time, that the public is consulted, not like when the meters were pushed through without consultation. So it's important that we do go to the public. $45,000 is a huge bill. I would like to see the Water Rates Committee reestablished with a consultant and hopefully we can do some of that public consultation without the consultants, so we don't have this $5,000 every time that they want to have a meeting.
Counselor Ross and then Counselor Hammett?
So Roslyn's had water meters for a while and I wonder how they came up with their water rates. Is that a simple conversation that we can have before we spend $45,000? Also, in terms of including a fee for water conservation, the City of Nelson has actually hired a water ambassador and I was visiting some friends of mine there just last week and they said their water ambassador is coming tomorrow and these are friends of mine who already conserve water. And they're having the water ambassador come who looks at the soil, looks at their methods of watering and these people grow a lot of food, they have a greenhouse in their front yard and, in the city. And they get a free water meter, or, no, water meter, water timer. So the city is, if you make an appointment with a water ambassador who makes recommendations just for doing that, you get a water timer from the city. So they're doing some things like that with, I don't think we really need Urban Systems to do that. I mean, a water ambassador would be great, that would be so good to do that. And even have, you know, shower head restrictors that we give to, I mean, I think that's money well spent. I don't know, I just think that the scope of work, we need to come up with our fees, but how are other cities doing it? Is, this is a research project that's costing quite a bit of money. It's a research project that we're asking Urban Systems to do. And it doesn't say public consultation, it says depending on how much consultation the city wishes to complete, that doesn't necessarily mean public. Is that just what we assume?
No, that's a good point, Counselor Ross. The only thing I would have a little concern of is what would be the competency of a water ambassador, as you stated, because that's quite important, based on the competency of this individual to make recommendations back to the city. I'm not saying that the person that's doing it in Nelson isn't competent, but I'm just saying depending who we would get, there's always that level of competency, which, I mean, it, you know, does his recommendations come based on his own opinion or does he come back on?
You hire competent people. There's competent students who, who study.
Yeah, as long as that's there, then that's, that's always an option. Counselor Hammett?
Thank you.
I'm pretty sure the water ambassador are not the people that have dictated the rates or determined what the rates will be. So we still, I'm sure Nelson's still used to consult, consultation and probably Urban Systems to determine what the rates are. And it's extremely complex when you're dealing with multifamily units, some being strata, some being privately owned but not strata, some being rental apartments. I mean, it's just a big, it's just a mess right now, to be honest. And as far as public consultation goes, I'm not sure, I mean, I believe in the process of public consultation when it comes to our OCP and what do we need for the city and where do people want to see what direction that they want it to go, what, you know, all kinds of processes that require public consultation. But we have, we know how much it costs to deliver the water throughout this city. So now it's just a matter of determining how to break that down towards commercial, industrial, business, residential, multifamily, and that's the complex part. And, and I don't see how public consultation can affect the outcome of what we know to need to deliver that service throughout the city as a whole. So I'm just not sure where public consultation's going to come in when it means delivering something like that.
Exactly. And as far as a water rates analysis, yes, a competent consultant should do that job because they do it all the time. Of course, I'm not the first to just put money out there, but you have to pay for what you get and these people do it all the time and it needs to be done properly. We got to get it right the first time, we don't get a second chance at this, or would we want to try to, because it would look pretty foolish as a corporation. Counselor Butler?
I'll raise a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Urban Systems has been involved in the water meter issue since the time that I was the treasurer. And they're very familiar with, with Grand Forks and I would not like to see this put up for tender. To me, it's just ongoing part of the work that they have done with the water meters issue in total.
Thank you. Counselor Butler?
Yeah, looking back at this 20-year financial plan that we got this morning, there's a lot of additions in red for this year and this $25,000 is one of those additions. The red in that column adds up to about $600,000. Am I to assume that these are all projects that we're going to be asked to make budget amendments for this year? They are, and we've already had a huge tax increase this year of about 15% plus a parcel tax and now another $600,000 to be added to that budget makes me extremely nervous. Of course, that 15% was just the city portion, not the overall accumulated taxes for the residents. But yeah, I need to know when the spending's going to stop.
To our CEO.
Mr. Mayor, the, to answer your question, what we're doing is telling you where we're recommending that you spend the money that you've asked the public to pay for. So that's the depreciation of your assets and the replacement of your assets. We're not asking you to ask the community for more money. What we're doing is saying, you've asked the community to pay this in taxes, this is where it's going and this is why. This is why you're funding your asset management plan as directed, through your strategic priorities, your asset management replacement plan is one of your key priorities and that's why it is before the council. We're not asking you to increase, what we're actually asking you to do is authorize the spending of the funding that you've asked for from the residents to replace your assets. So, Mr. Mayor, the, that was the, in relation to the 20-year capital plan.
Just to clarify, I'm confused because I thought our tax increase was to cover the budget that we had already set forth for this year. The tax increase doesn't include this extra $600,000 that's being proposed over the year of 2016. So if it does go up by $600,000, that has to come from somewhere other than this year's taxes, which only covered the original budget.
To our CEO.
Mr. Mayor, as reported through the audited financial statements, we had, we reported out to council the, the funding that we had and we reported back to council after the fact on the unforeseen $577,000 that we had, that we were in surplus and we asked council to direct that funding. Funding was directed in portion to, or in total to, as part of your overall 20-year financial plan. The other piece to that is your surplus. So in your surplus, we asked you to make sure that you kept 20 to 25%?
25.
According to your policy and you've adopted that by policies, by council's policy. So that's what we've done and now, now what we've done is we've funded your depreciation as per council policy and now, now therefore we're asking you with your reserve funds that you have in place to dedicate those reserves to specific projects, so you know exactly where you're spending your money. So that is the rationale behind the presentation. What we're doing is telling council, or recommending to council that what you've done is you've set aside this funding and this is what you set aside for. So throughout that 20-year plan, you'll see that there's varying years that you have funding, you're collecting in taxation for reserves that will be applied in 2022, 2017, 2019, throughout the course of the next 20 years. That is the idea behind that plan. We actually, what we said to council several weeks ago, or a couple of weeks ago, was that we were, we were anticipating a three-year delivery of that. We came up short this year in total of that three-year plan of $84,000. Based on fiscal responsibility within the organization with a surplus, we actually achieved our goals. We were short of achieving 1.9 million going into reserves annually by $84,000, just through the, the conservative measures that our staff undertook. So I can tell council today that being short $84,000 of a balanced budget that's funding your deficit, your, your asset replacement deficit by 50% is a huge accomplishment. What that tells you to your community is realistically, I'm just going to put it out there, you would, you would, might not even need to ask for a taxation increase next year. You're, you're there, you're at the point where you need to be. And, and what that, the good news for the community is that you've achieved that milestone and I think that's one of the goals that most communities are trying to achieve, is how to fund their liabilities and we're in a position right now where we can fund their liabilities.
Your worship, if I could make a comment, please?
Go ahead.
The, the issue that we are dealing with is a comprehensive water rates analysis that would be funded by water surplus. How we got into discussing taxation and rates which fund the general revenue has nothing to do with the issue on the table. And so I think, I think, you know, people just don't understand adequately how the city is, and its different utilities and operations are funded. And I would like to just deal with the, the proposed recommendation that we fund the water rates analysis for $25,000 from the water surplus. And if there isn't a motion on the table to that effect, I'm prepared to make one.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. There is a motion on the table, I think the discussion went a little bit south.
Yes, I, I believe it did.
So I'm going to call a question, unless there's any. Counselor Butler?
Yeah, just to follow up on Counselor Ross, on what she was saying about a water ambassador. Within the Urban Systems Report, it says water rates that send an accurate price signal to the customer are known to be effective at reducing water consumption and these punitive effects to get people to reduce water consumption, I, I don't find as friendly a way as the personal touch of a water ambassador going around and educating people. So I think that money would be better spent in that area and with re-establishing a committee to work with a consultant at a lower price than just letting the consultants take it on full bore at $25,000 to $45,000 of taxpayers' money. Depending, not depending on whether it comes from surplus or whether it comes from taxes, it's still an increase to the ratepayers.
But the water surplus. The water utility is not funded by taxation, so please don't confuse the public anymore by trying to marry the two together because they're not related.
Sorry for confusing you, Counselor Thompson. What I meant to say is that the money still comes out of the taxpayer's pockets, it doesn't matter if it's coming from surplus or taxation, it is still coming from the people of Grand Forks.
Yes, it is, but these user rates that we're talking about and surplus in a, in its separate utility. And I think that has to be made abundantly clear.
And I would, I forgot what I was going to say.
Okay, I'm going to call a question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor?
No, I voted in favor, my number was up.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Manager Development Engineering Services, the subject matter is Strategic Community Energy and Emissions Plan, otherwise known as SEEP, and the recommendation is council accepts the presentation from Community Energy Association in Fortis, B.C., for information endorses the Strategic Community Energy and Emission Plan, SEEP, and incorporates SEEP actions into city policy framework to support the community in reducing emissions. Secondly, it's like direct staff to proceed with implementation of high priority actions through planning processes, Sustainable Community Plan and Zoning Bylaw, and community partnerships. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Hammond, a seconder. Counselor Tripp. All in favor?
I vote in favor.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Again, to our Manager Development Engineering Services, subject matter Sustainable Community Plan and Zoning Bylaw update. Recommendation is council directs staff to undertake a five-year review of the Sustainable Community Plan, the SCP, and authorizes staff to proceed with a public and stakeholder engagement program as per the statutory requirement and best management practices. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammond, any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. To our Manager Development Engineering Services, subject matter Approval to Proceed with the Applying for Grant Funding. Recommendation, council supports staff in proceeding with the preparing and submitting an application for the Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program with the 50% portion of funds, $40,000 required of city coming from capital reserves and donations. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Hammond, a seconder.
I'll second that.
Counselor Thompson. All in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion, go ahead.
This $40,000 that we're going to be required to pay, is that in the budget this year, and is it in the 20-year financial plan?
Your CEO.
Mr. Mayor, if we are successful in obtaining the funding, we will get the criteria and we'll bring it back to council, but as discussed this morning, we would look at as the donations of in-kind and in-kind from the city. If there is a requirement for the cash, then that will be brought forward to council to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
So now what's the answer, it's not in the budget?
It's not in the budget.
Thank you.
Counselor Tripp.
Through you to the CEO, could, Mr. Mayor, would there be an estimated amount that that could possibly be for those projects?
Your CEO.
Mr. Mayor, the one thing that we're looking at is through the, because it is a multiple projects, because it's a dog park, the unmarked graves, the cemetery, and the Johnson Flats wetlands, we are looking at this right now, that there has been some discussion that there was going to be donations of wood and fencing materials and these things, and these would all have a value, plus our city staff have to install that, so I'm going to estimate that it's going to come in at approximately $39,998 for council, if that was me reporting back to the grant folks. So asking that very little would come out of the fund, but what I would have to do is amend the financial plan to include that funding in the plan to ensure that it was approved by council because it's an amendment of an expenditure. So we have to by law include that into our plan.
Counselor Tripp again, then Counselor Butler.
Thank you. I guess just this morning, when it was brought up that this, there was a competing application going in for these funds, I just, I'm a little concerned. I know that the dog park issue, I was here when those people were asking for more facilities down there, and I really agree that it's important to have those kinds of things for people in the community where it's a little more comfortable because it is a very hot, open space over there. With the people in the cemetery eating headstones, I think that those dead people can probably live without the city's money spent on headstones. And then I'm just not sure about the signage issue with the Johnson Flats wetland project. I understood that that was mainly what the money was going to go for, was for signage. So I think just because there is this contentious issue with the other application going forward, and I think that that's a very important one for the community, I'm probably going to have to be voting no on this.
Counselor Butler.
Yeah, when we went to take the tour out around the cemetery site, I remember staff saying that a lot of the expenses would go to reinforcing the bank, that if we were going to put a trail, like an official trail along there, that it would be quite costly to reinforce that bank, which they felt wouldn't be insurance-worthy if we were to put a path in there. And I'm also kind of confused because I know the dog park isn't going to take a lot of our money, but we did do testing already on the site to see if there were graves in the expanded area, but for some reason we didn't do them out far enough. So we've paid for it already, and I think now is that we're going to have to pay for it again because we didn't test far enough into the expanded area for the dog park. Is that where the extra cost is coming from?
No, actually, there are people involved, if I'm right, which are looking into the historical issues on that property, where there could be possible graves and so on. So there's not a necessity right now that we'll be digging anymore costs involved because even if the posts were put in, we probably wouldn't, just hypothetically, we would not be digging that deep to even hit a grave for a fence post. So that's not a relevance, but we're looking for the professional, the historic data to bring it forward, so in case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and these are projects that are already underway by council. We haven't started spending money on them yet, so if we had to spend money on them, we would be identifying that, so council just being aware that if we don't go after the grant, that you would have some expenditures to go after. I realize that it probably wouldn't be considered to be a priority according to the grant criteria from the federal government, but council has approved that we are moving on these projects right now. So I guess the, for us, looking at this, it would save the taxpayers' money if we were successful, but I can see the conflict with competing interests. But if the regional district does come forward with a grant application, you know, the community, I'm sure the council would consider that as a resolution to, to see that whether doing the selection of the grants, that may become the priority. But again, council, if council doesn't want to embark upon those projects, then they would want to hold them back, that is not allocate any funding towards them.
Do we have any other questions? So I'm going to call a question.
Customer or manager?
Oh, sorry, or Manager Engineering, go ahead.
We didn't, but there's nothing in that budget for stabilizing the bank, we have no intention of stabilizing the bank, we don't need to, we were going to be keeping the trail far back from the bank.
Okay.
Counselor Butler.
Yeah, well, I'm curious then, we really don't need to do anything except in-kind for the dog park. We're going to be having historical people assay the sites that there may have been graves, which sounds like volunteer job, and we're not reinforcing the banks, so what are we spending $80,000 on?
Our Manager.
Well, there is some trail construction enhancement, but it doesn't include stabilization of the bank. The signage, kiosks, the wayfinding of the cemetery was included, interpretive documents, First Nations knowledge base. The wetlands are known as a, for the First Nations, use a lot of the plants that were in wetlands, and so we'd be consulting with the First Nations on that. The shelter, the shelter is a very, it's a quite a big investment. Fencing is very pricey because we've gone from expanding at 20 feet to 50 feet, 100 feet, I'm not exactly sure where that's going to go depending on where we find out where the graveyard ends, and that, like the fence is, I think about 150 feet minimum, chain link, ground penetrating radar, parking area improvements, cleanup and restoration, environmental impact study and design work for a viewing platform boardwalk. We can't just go down and build a viewing platform or boardwalk down in a wetland area without some engineering help on that, so.
Counselor Butler.
Yeah, thank you for the details that helps clear up the funding. I just think though, as we talk about regional collaboration and having our regional directors sit at the table with us for committee of the wholes and working together as a general area, I think it would be much more beneficial for us to throw support behind the regional district and their application for the pool resurfacing of the deck, and to work as a team with the regional district on that, and, but we still work on the dog park, I mean, that was going forward anyways, that was already voted on by council as a project that we would complete.
Counselor Ross.
I'm going to vote in favor of this because I really like the idea of us moving ahead more quickly with establishing and enhancing the wetland and making it more accessible and well-known within our public, with our public. It's a significant area in our community, and I think it's a first for us as a community to be designating city-owned land as a perpetual green space. So I am voting in favor because I'd like to see this move ahead and as a vanguard for more projects similar to this within our region and within our community. So I'm really excited with the Johnsons Wetland, and it is significant.
Counselor Butler.
Yes, it is definitely a beautiful area. I'm curious, if we don't receive this grant funding, will the city be funding the full $80,000 for the project?
Your CEO.
That was a good decision of council, Mr. Mayor.
So now I'm going to call a question, all in favor?
I vote in favor.
Anyone opposed? Counselor Tripp and Counselor Butler are opposed, so the motion is carried. Moving along to information items from our Chief Administrative Officer, subject matter Appointment of Physicians, and the recommendation is council received for information in memorandum from the CEO regarding the acting corporate officer and the acting deputy corporate officer for information. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Hammond, a seconder. Counselor Ross. All in favor?
Just a question.
Any discussion? Okay, go ahead. Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I've just had questions from members of the public as to the details surrounding this, when our corporate officer will be returning, and also if she is being paid in her absence.
The corporate officer is on indefinite leave at this point, and as far as the other pieces, the details of the contract will not be shared at this point.
Thank you. Counselor Butler.
Sorry, it's just it's a very costly position for the city, and I'm just wondering if the public don't have the right to know where their money is being spent, and if this is going to incur us extra costs to pay somebody else to do her job that she's not here for.
Counselor Butler, with all due respect, the question has been asked and answered. Any other questions or concerns? Counselor Butler.
Yeah, so we're appointing Sarah Winton as Deputy Corporate Officer and Daniel Drexler to Ms. Winton's position. Will there be extra costs for training these individuals to fulfill their new roles now?
Your CEO.
That's the shortest answer.
I'm going to call a question, all in favor?
I vote in favor.
Anyone opposed? Counselor Butler is opposed, the motion is carried. Moving along to our Chief Financial Officer, the Memo on Slight Fund Reserve Activity from 1977 to Year End 2015. Recommendation is council received a memorandum from the Chief Financial Officer regarding Slight Fund Reserve Activity from 1977 to Year End 2015, as requested by council. May I have a mover? Counselor Butler, Counselor Hammond.
May I speak to the motion or to the issue, your worship?
Absolutely, go ahead, Counselor Thompson.
I would like to thank our CFO for an excellent report that shows what the Slight Fund has funded, and it's very informative, and I know I requested this, and I hope I didn't burden, I shouldn't be taking a burden on her workload, but this is excellent information, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Counselor Tripp and then Counselor Hammond.
Yes, I absolutely agree with that. I didn't know much about the Slight Fund, and people had talked about in the community about it being a very large amount of money that had, you know, very steadily decreased. So it really was interesting to see all the different projects that had been funded through this Slight Fund for the community. The one question that I do have is on each year, there is a contribution to the reserve, the Slight royalties, and that's been fairly consistent, and I'm just wondering, does that fluctuate with interest rates, or how do those royalties come in, and will that be an ongoing amount at infinitum?
To our CFO or CEO. Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, I'll speak to the first part of that. It is not an indefinite revenue stream for the city, it is affected by such terms as the provincial government and mineral taxes and securi taxes. It's also affected in respect to the US dollar. It also is respect, it's affected by the definition by the federal government of the mineral content that they're allowed to apply, so right now they use a lot of that product for environmental situations that are considered to be environmentally friendly, the byproduct. They'll actually sandblast Navy ships with the material, and it's considered to be inert, but as the federal government of the United States makes changes to that legislation, that may change. So we will be at the, basically at the mercy of the federal regulations. The contributions to reserves, I'll ask the Chief Financial Officer to speak to that.
Sorry, what was the question? I wanted to know if they were going to be steady for?
Yes, just ongoing.
I believe we have another 20 years in the lease, but that doesn't guarantee anything, it depends on what they take out of that site. So they pay us by the time, so it would depend on if they stay in business, if they're able to sell their material, so it's a little bit risky.
Thank you.
Counselor Hammond.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of the previous counselors. Congratulations to Ms. Shepherd, this is a monumental task, and going back and researching all of this and getting all this information for us, I really appreciate it, and it looks like it was a lot of hard work, thank you.
So I may echo that too, yes, very well done, thank you. So unless there's any other questions, I'm going to call the, any other discussion, I'll call the question, all in favor? Anyone opposed?
No.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. The motion is carried. Again, to our Chief Financial Officer, subject matter Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program, otherwise known as CIP, Public Report for 2015. The recommendation is council received the Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program, Public Report for 2015 for information. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Hammond, Counselor Butler? Any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Community Energy Association, subject matter Information Concerning Fueling the Kootenays, a Comprehensive Collaborative Approach to a Kootenay-Wide Electric Vehicle Charging Station Network. The recommendation is council received the information from the Community and Energy Association regarding fueling the Kootenays, Comprehensive Collaborative Approach to a Kootenay-Wide Electric Vehicle Charging Station Network for information. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Butler, seconder. Counselor Hammond? Unless there's any discussion, all in favor? So carried. Boundary Women's Fastball, subject matter Requesting Permission for a Special Occasion Liquor License on Saturday, June 25th and Sunday, June 26th at Angus McDonald Park for the Boundary Women's Fastball Annual Year-End Wind-Up Tournament. The recommendation is that council approves the issuing of a special occasion liquor license to the Boundary Women's Fastball Tournament on June 25th and June 26th, 2016, at Angus McDonald Park, subject to the Boundary Women's Fastball Obtaining Third-Party Alcohol Liability Insurance, Naming the City of Grand liability insurance, naming the City of Grand Forks as an additional insured on the policy that all Boundary Women's Fastball liquor providers to hold a serving and write license certificate and ICBC drinking and driving warning posters to be displayed. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Hammett, Counselor Butler? All in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion, go ahead, Counselor Hammett. Who began to think there was any discussion?
I just wanted to comment on, I'm just so glad to see that that park is so well-used. I drive by there in the evenings and on their game nights and they bring a lot of people out from the community to watch their games and the parking lot is always full, it's overflowed. So, and I'm glad to see that that facility is so well-used. They had the tournament there last year and it was great. I mean, I could hear them cheering from my home, but they were having a great time and I'm all in favor of this and I think they do a great job.
Thank you. Unless there's any other discussion, I'm going to call the question, all in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Going to the Bylaw Section from the Manager of Development Engineering Services. Subject matter: To amend current Sustainable Community Plan bylaw by adding a policy statement for temporary use permits. Recommendation, council gives third reading to the City of Grand Forks Sustainable Community Amendment bylaw number 1919-A1-2016. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Butler, Counselor Hammett, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. To our Chief Financial Officer. 2016 Water Rates Amendment. Recommendation, council gives final reading to bylaw 1973-A2 Water Regulation Amendment 2016. May I have a mover, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson, the second. Counselor Ross. All in favor? Anyone? Anyone opposed? Counselor Butler? Motion is carried. We have no late items? Oh, one more, okay. Chief Financial Officer, the 2016 Wastewater Rates Amendment. Council gives final reading to bylaw 1974-A1 Sewer Regulations Amendment 2016. May I have a mover on that, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Butler, Counselor Thompson, the second. Counselor Tripp? Discussion. Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I just got a question. I actually asked it a few years ago when I came to council. And our sewer rates for people that are on a metered water rate are dependent on their water intake and I'm just curious how that can be fair. You know, a lot of the water that we use in this town goes to water our gardens and such and it doesn't go down the drain. So I see that that could be quite detrimental to people as we go on a metered water rate that they're going to now be paying their sewer based on the hundreds of liters that they pump onto their garden and it just doesn't seem, doesn't seem fair.
I don't think there's any way of monitoring that.
Mr. Mayor, no. Then that would be part of the water rates discussion because to hundred percent in the water out and a hundred percent the water in and a hundred percent the water out without a credit meter showing that it would be next to impossible, especially when we talk about leaks, we talked about yard application, we talked about the different conditions that would arise and I would suggest to council, don't ever a hundred percent to in, a hundred percent to out because it's just not an equitable system.
That's why most commercial establishments have credit meters for their irrigation. Counselor Butler.
Yeah, when these rates were first introduced in the states, it was what became most cumbersome for people in growing food for themselves was that their sewer rates went up so high, it wasn't just their water rates, it was the sewer rates as well. So I'm wondering why a flat rate for sewer wouldn't be a fair way to go considering that most of the water used, especially in the summertime, is for gardens and for washing cars and for things outside. Pretty much everyone, I think, would use basically the same amount of sewer unless you've got, you know, ten teenagers in your house. So why not a flat rate for sewer?
Mr. Shepherd, are we not getting ahead of ourselves here on disputing the potential metered rates? We're talking about rates for this year.
Exactly. You're right, Counselor Thompson. Counselor Butler.
With all due respect, Counselor Thompson, some people already are on metered sewer rates, those that have had water meters installed for commercial and is it the strata or there's other multi-family units that are on meter grade already?
To our CEO.
Mr. Mayor, that would all be determined in the water rates analysis.
Thank you.
So just for clarification, through you to our CEO, are we charging metered rates on sewer at this point in time?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, we are, for, like Counselor Butler said, for multifamily apartments, for commercial, for industrial, we are. So we're charging per-third of a cubic meter of water that's used, so although it's...
So that's not being charged? Assuming that water that's coming in is going out, it's pro-rated.
To a third. Thank you.
So if there are no other questions or discussion, I'm calling the question. All in favor?
I vote in favor.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Now, seeing as we have no late items, we're going to move on to the questions from the public and the media. And again, as usual, may I caution everyone that the subject matter has to pertain to the items that are on this evening's agenda, otherwise they will not be counted.
Mr. Shepherd, may I just say one thing before that happens?
Sure, go right ahead. Here you go, I've got the mic here.
I would like to thank you and council for providing me the opportunity to participate in today's meetings via teleconferencing. I take my role as a member of council very seriously and the items on the agenda for this morning's and this evening's meetings were important to me, such that I wanted to be able to participate. So I thank you very much.
And I, Counselor Thompson, thank you also for taking the time to participate with us. And though you're on holidays, it's appreciated that you take your role so seriously. Thank you. So now moving on to, are you sticking around, Counselor Thompson, or are you signing off?
Uh, I'll stick around.
Sounds great, thank you. Questions from the public and the media? Go ahead. Open the floor. The gentleman in the front.
Yeah, Fred Scott?
Yes, I'm going to try to get him.
I have questions about the, sorry.
You just need a microphone so that he can...
Yeah, I do, I didn't before. What's that? Just talking about this? Okay. I'd like to talk about the water rates.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Fred Scott, I did, sorry. Well over a year ago, I brought the attention to City Hall, I live in a condominium, that if our place was called an apartment building rather than a condominium, our water bill would be between nine hundred to a thousand dollars a last every two months. Now on top of that, we've had this partial tax on the fire truck where we paid eighteen times as much as we paid if we were in an apartment building. So the one question I have, is the City of Grand Forks dripping off condos or are they subsidizing apartment owners? And why are they doing it? And another thing, the last, I got a letter from City Hall telling me that the installations would be finished this year and then they were going to monitor things for at least a year and then adjustments would be made. So that puts us into 2018. Now I got a letter from the Ombudsman today that says City Hall has told her, them, that the rates will be adjusted by 2017. So why is the Ombudsman being given different information than I am?
To our CEO.
Mr. Mayor, we're not privileged to speak to an Ombudsperson's report, so we can't speak to any content of anything to do with the Ombudsperson. I can't speak to it. I would love to, but I cannot.
Can you tell me if you're subsidizing apartments or ripping off condos?
To our CEO.
Mr. Mayor, as part of that process, we went, we've been looking into the water rates for the different, considered to be the different types of zones or the land uses and oftentimes those things are predetermined and they're decisions that were made well beyond our time in our positions. One of the things we are recommending to council is to undertake a comprehensive water rates analysis to ensure that there is a fair and equitable system in place. You know, Mr. Scott raises a great point and I agree that the, looking at this from a comprehensive process is the only fair way to do it in our community. If there is a determination that a property is defined underneath as a condominium versus an apartment, I mean, it's semantics, but it's really, it's a situation that was a bylaw from many, many years ago. I think the new process that we undertake, Mr. Mayor, will be a completely reviewed, comprehensive look at our water rates to ensure that something like this, if it is the case, will not happen in our community, whether it's a trailer park or a condominium or a townhouse. You know, everybody would be considered to be, it would be consulted with the public and it would be considered to be a fair process to establish rates. So I can just, I can just simply say that we are, we are not looking to discriminate against anybody, we are making sure that we do have our business in order. So decisions made in the past, our decisions made in the past, moving forward, we can only, we can only move forward.
But it's taken a well, well over a year.
Can you speak into the microphone?
It's taken a well... It's taken a well over a year and nothing's been corrected. Now what would, what happens when we finally get our new rates? If there happens to be a problem, is it going to take years again rather than you're just making an adjustment to the rates?
So, Mr. Mayor, once the rates, if council so chooses to adopt the new rates, that will be a decision of council. We don't know if condominiums and apartments are being undercharged or overcharged in comparison to residential, industrial, commercial. That rates analysis will clarify that and that will be a decision that council will make based on the recommendations that they hear from the consultants on it.
But based on, based on common sense, why would one building, the same building, pay a higher rate because it had many owners instead of one owner?
Mr. Mayor, I can't, I can't speak to that, to that comment.
Thank you. Counselor Tripp.
Well, I was just wondering if maybe, if that information and that concern could be passed on then to, I guess it's Urban Systems who's going to do this consultation, is that not the case? Then they could take it under advisement, take it into consideration and then we'd actually have it in there and then Mr. Scott would know that his concerns have been dealt with and that we can look at them in a practical way.
Counselor Ross.
Other cities and towns have condos and apartments and there must be some model that we can refer to. I'm sure there's justifiable and fair ways that this is being handled in other jurisdictions. And once again, revending the wheel is expensive, so I'm hoping that Urban Systems will look at other models and that work and that are fair.
I'm sorry, I don't...
And I'm sure they were, will be doing that.
I don't know if all the counselors are aware of it. I've sent information to the mayor and I know he passed it along to this CEO, but in 2003, they were, the strata council was concerned about their water bill and they met with City Council and the water meter...
Yeah, we're getting a microphone.
A water meter was installed at the strata corporation's expense, not like the ones that are being installed for free now. And they used that meter for five years and then the city in their wisdom no longer reached the meter, but it's still there. The city gave me the readings for the last two years when I first went in and seen them and now the readings are on our bill, but they're not being used.
To our CEO.
Mr. Mayor, so when it comes to land use and people applying for different zoning for land uses, it may have been, I can't, I'd only be speculating, but for instance, somebody might find that the specific zoning for the densities, they would apply for that type of zoning use under our zoning bylaw. So they might get apartment status based on the type of zoning that was there, which would have been beneficial to the developer at the time. It may not be beneficial to the residents now, but for the developer at the time, they may have sought that to be beneficial, almost like a freehold strata. A freehold strata is not beneficial to the residents living in that neighborhood because they own the land, but yet they're responsible for the water main, the sewer main, the snow removal and the street sweeping and everything else rather than being covered under your general taxation. So there are different kinds of things to consider there, but I think the, actually I know that the water rates analysis will help us clarify those things and simply speaking that Mr. Scott has raised a valid point to our community and it is being brought forward and going to be addressed.
Do I have any other questions? Gentleman in the front.
Jim Cook, two questions. One, the report that was done by the Chief Financial Officer on the usage of the SLIG Fund back from 1977, is that available to the public or how can we obtain that?
It's on the agenda. It's part of the agenda. Yes.
And my second question is, this, under the water meter issue, which is part of the discussion tonight, but my concern has always been, even with the prior council and mayor, no one has yet ever really seemed to come up with an honest report establishing how much water is lost into the ground that's been pumped. And we, you know, we're paying for a product, but are we getting all of that product? So I don't know, you know, based on the engineering reports put out by Urban Systems and other reports I've read from the towns east of here, the losses in these towns can be anywhere from twenty-four, twenty-seven to seventy-four percent in the ground before it gets to the consumer. I want to know when the next, how quickly and how soon an in-depth survey can be done to find water leaks that we may have and get them repaired so that if we, if we're paying for the overall maintenance and cost of running pumps and running the water system, that if we're paying for whatever we're paying for that cubic of water, that we're actually getting a cubic meter of water. And in my mind, that should have been addressed long before meters were ever addressed. You can't keep painting the barn without putting a roof on the barn, so the, my concern is that the taxpayers are never been, have never been treated fairly because the water that's disappearing into the ground and it can be chlorinated water in addition to that, that that problem, that's still a glaring outstanding problem that needs to be fixed and fixed as quickly as possible. And I would like to see that happen before anything else was done, any more on water meters and let the water meters sit for a year and let the rates, the consumption be monitored or whatever. And I'd like a response from the mayor and or council in that regard as to when this could happen.
I can say it's work in progress. We're working on it and the water rates, metering rates are mock billing, so the year that you have mentioned is going to happen, so there's going to be no actual billing. And during that course of time, it will be looked at. It's work in progress. It's not something we've just put on the back burner, but like everything else, it takes time. Do the residential meters and then of course district metering, it will all be a process that will occur. But like everything else, it takes time. Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I think I remember Mr. Reed, our...
Yeah, I think I remember Mr. Reed, our Manager of Operations, mentioning something about water losses that he has been able to, just briefly, I remember him mentioning something. So, maybe if he were to contact our Manager of Operations, he might have some information for you.
Again, the water leak we had a couple of weeks ago on Central Avenue, that was apparently a service that was feeding whatever property it was feeding. But those kind of leaks where the water lines are running underneath the streets that are never, are not really identical by wet spots on the surface of the ground. We still have, in my mind, I've never heard or never seen anything that gives us an idea of how bad they are and where they are. So, that problem is the biggest single glaring problem that needs to be addressed.
To our CEO.
So, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that a leak detection program does, it gives you a snapshot in time. As soon as you turn your back and walk away from that, the snapshot can change. Because of the aging infrastructure, we cannot guarantee that that information will be 100% accurate. The one thing that we can determine now, though, is once we have the meters in, along with the zone metering or the neighborhood metering and our pump data, it will just simply become an equation for us in the neighborhoods. It will be a simple deduction of residential, commercial, and industrial consumption, subtracting the zone meters from different areas, subtracting the amount that we take out of the ground. And that delivery should tell us in these zones where we're going to have these leaks. And it will give us, without spending $50,000 on sounding equipment to go through the neighborhood, we'll be able to determine with the zone meters where our leaks are in conjunction with our metering information. It'll tell our, it'll give us a clearer direction for our community for where we need to be revamping our investment into infrastructure as well. The ability for us to, you know, we have, I can't remember how many kilometers or thousands of meters of pipe we have in our community, varying from half inch all the way up to 12-inch pipe. It is, our leaks, I'm going to tell you, they're going to be something that we'll never be able to get a handle on beyond the scope of, I'm going to say at least 10%, will always leak. A system, a water system with gasketed fittings will always leak because it's aging. We'll fix one problem, and another one will pop up. It'll almost be like the cartoon where we're putting our finger in the hole in the wire, and there'll be another one, water will pop out somewhere else. You know, and I think that's just the nature of a municipal water system. We would be privileged to have a system that was installed in 1980 that I could give you some certainty. But I can tell you that we have a pipe that goes all the way back into the 30s. So, I can tell you that there is some, and some of it may be in better condition than some of the pipes that was installed in the 50s, depending on the ground and the soil condition. So, I can tell you that today, we're developing our information, Mr. Mayor, and we should be able to get more information for the community as we move forward in time. So, I can tell you that we're moving in a positive direction, but being able to answer that question with some certainty.
Just to weigh in on that conversation, for instance, if there's a residential water meter without residential water meters, the leak could be potentially past the city's curb stop, which is on private property. And the city has no authority to go on private property. So, the leak could be anywhere from the curb stop to the residential meter. So, it's not necessary leaks only in the city's system. It could be on that private portion, which cannot be identified without a water meter in combination with district meter. And then still would be a hard find, because how do you go on somebody's property and establish where the leak is? It's like looking for a needle in a haystack.
I'm aware of that, but again, when you consider that the amount of water that would be fed to a residence where there might be a leak in a toilet, a toilet flapper and a tank leaking, compared to a leak under, off of a main underneath the city street, the loss of water could be monumental in comparison.
I'm not referring to a toilet flapper. I'm referring to the fact that a leak in the main going from the curb stop to the house. Because if it's a toilet flapper leaking, the resident's going to be, his meter's going to be turning. So, he'll be paying for that if he's not preparing his flapper or any sink or faucet that's leaking. I'm referring to the portion on the outside, which could be a 3/4-inch main that could be leaking profusely. And multiply that by, how many residents do we have in Grand Forks? Let's take a small portion of them. It would be huge, very easily equivalent to a water main from the city. So, there's many factors that have to be addressed. So, like I said, it's a work in progress.
Well, I'm aware of what you speak of, but at the same time, the water mains are the city's responsibility, and the taxpayers are paying for that, and those water mains and those leaks are the ones that need to be addressed. And the city properties, I don't disagree with you. But the priority of which should have been addressed first, I would suggest that it should have been on the city's water mains first. And the metering will grant what you're talking about. At the same time, the loss of water through the water mains could be immensely greater, probably a 12-inch line than it is over one 3-inch line, one 3/4-inch line.
I agree, but that's only going on assumption that the city water mains are leaking. That's based on assumption, just like the assumption that it could be on the residences. Both are just based on assumptions. And until the proper metering is done, district and residential, that will be determined.
Well, they're not based on assumptions. They're based on the reports that the engineering companies provide. And they've done studies on dozens of towns of our age and vintage that have ancient water lines. So, you can't maybe nail it down to the specific meter of water being lost, but you can certainly nail it down to, the same way, what happens here is they talk, we talk about, the initial output was the people of Grand Forks use three times, or near three times the amount of water that other communities in British Columbia does, and I just don't believe that to be true. I don't believe that anybody changes their living habits from one community to another that would account for that. So, you have to look at the possibility that it's the leaks in the lines that are consuming the additional amount of water. When Mr. Allen moved here from Peachland, I'm pretty sure he didn't use any more water here than he did when he was living in Peachland. And that's what I'm suggesting, is these things, the amount of water being pumped, the total bill that I saw is about $750,000 a year we pay for the electricity side of it. But if 20, 30, 40, 50 percent of that cost is being passed on to the consumer, and it's disappearing in the ground, the water is disappearing into the ground before their consumer ever gets a chance to use it, that's a very unfair arrangement. Nobody would be willing to pay for a gallon of gas and accept the half a gallon of gas. So, I'd like to see you move as quickly as you possibly can to get, to do these surveys and get any problems the city has, get them repaired as quickly as possible, so we're just treated fairly. And that's my point.
Yes, which was mentioned. We are working. It's work in progress. But again, as Mr. Allen had stated, you might fix one leak, and you could have another one somewhere else. Because that's very, very, unless you change all the mains, and I don't think the budget would allow for that. And I don't know why we use Mr. Allen as a reference coming from Peachland. You could have said myself coming from Kelowna.
Yeah.
Thank you for that comment. To our CEO.
Just one last comment. We have, we are absolutely certain that our water consumption goes up in quarters two and quarter three in our community. It is without a doubt, according to our SCADA information, that once the sprinklers come on in our community, the water consumption and our consumption values and our pump energy goes up, and we're using way more water. And then in the fall, when we move into the point of the year where we're no longer using water outside, it goes down drastically. So, on our pump curves, you can start to see the graphs that show the information. So, I can say to council with 100% certainty that we use more water in quarters one and quarters two, or quarters two and quarters three. And then our leaks would be determined. If they were leaks, they would be leaking all year round. And there is going to be more leaks when we start consuming more water through sprinkler systems because, you know, a head might break off, there may be a leak out of the threads where the teflon is worn away, where there is going to be some leakage. But the certainty that we do know is in quarters two and quarters three, we use a considerable amount more water than we use in quarters one and quarters four. What we're going to be able to determine over the course of the next several years is where and how much of that water is being lost, and we'll be able to report back to council. So, your points are definitely something that we appreciate, and it's an important cost for us to consider because the delivery of water in our community, in our system, in our delivery model, it's not efficient for us to be running, you know, it's like delivering newspapers in a vehicle with a 12-cylinder engine. It's not efficient, right? So, we want to find the most efficient way that we can deliver the water in our community. And I think that's what we'll be able to report, actually, I know that's what we'll be able to report back to council, is some efficiencies and some numbers around that, and we'll be able to report back with certainty. So, I can just share that with you today, that that's the direction that we're going.
And do we have a timeframe that when this is going to come to pass? Are we talking six months, one year, four years?
Several years, Mr. Mayor. It'll be several years as we capture this data and our demographics change in our community, climate change happens. There are going to be so many factors that come into this, our information regarding water conservation, the changing in patterns. I mean, climate change, we saw last year, level four drought coming at us, fire situations. I mean, there's so many different variables. But I can tell you that we are going to be able to provide more information, and council will be able to make more decisions with that information for years to come, in perpetuity. It won't stop. I can't say to you that it's going to stop on a specific timeline because I'm expecting that we're going to be auditing the delivery of our water through the system on an annual basis, and we'll be reporting that audit back to council. To be able to tell council, this is what we anticipate for losses, this is what we anticipate for, this is what we're estimating for consumption. And in council, here's some other factors for you to consider. But it'll be before council to make all the decisions associated with that.
And as far as the loss of water goes, at any time you could get another leak. That's, in my mind, that's another reason there should be an ongoing program for water. Water districts are created, and each district or districts are sectionalized and metered. The districts in and of themselves are sectionalized. And you, once a year or once, whatever it takes, yes, you can, you can only fix the leaks that you see today. And if a leak starts tomorrow, you can't fix that until you know about it. But if you have an ongoing program where every once a year, those lines are checked again, somewhere along the line, you're going to find and catch that leak.
Absolutely. 100% right.
Exactly. Thank you.
I'll pass that back here. Thank you.
To the gentleman in the back.
Les Johnson. Ah, it's not working. So, you passed the Code of Conduct?
No, no.
Didn't you?
We referred it.
You referred it. Oh, okay. Because I was going to offer you, anybody who wanted to help monitor P's and Q's, to parrot. She has to give good advice, but it's really hard for people to get upset with you when they see her giving you advice. Anyways.
Was that a sarcastic comment?
Well, no, really. Oh, you go ahead.
No, no, I'll pass it.
No, oh, okay. Good question?
Yes.
Lady in second.
Gloria Cook here. This morning, there was a review or discussion around a 20-year, a reference to a 20-year, the 20-year financial plan. And you had it up on the screen. Is there a copy available of that, that information? It seemed quite extensive, so.
It was in the agenda.
It was in the agenda.
It was in the agenda, I think, also.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry then. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? To the lady in the back.
Yes, so much so, thank you. Kate Zeller from the Grand Works Gazette. I was just wondering exactly the implications of the Code of Conduct being referred to staff. What does that mean?
Yeah, please, I didn't catch that.
Okay, sorry about that. The Code of Conduct being referred to staff, I believe, what does that mean? Will it be coming back to council in the future?
Yes, absolutely. It's going to be brought back. The reasoning was because there was, the council felt it was being a little premature to implement it that fast. And so, it's going to give more time to look at the different options that council has to put forward. And we're going to readdress it, look at it again. Not that we're going to change it totally, but we want to like to work collaboratively together as a council and come out with the best. In other words, we want to get it right the first time. Because we do want to set the precedent here, if it's going to go further to the UVCM and to the ministry. And if there is any provisions in the charter that we'll be trying to implement as far as this code goes, we want, as I stated this morning, want to be the poster child for VC. Well, then, we want to get it right. We don't want any glitches. We want to cross all our Ts and D's and D's and Is.
I remember that. Is there a projected timeline on that?
Timeline as far as?
When it, when it would come back to council.
Probably to July the 18th, regular meeting. Pardon? That's what it was put forward to. So, yeah, that's the, because council, another council are being absent at the earlier one, so we can't have it. So, that's why we decided for that date. Plus, it gives enough time, you know, to discuss it further.
Thank you.
Any other questions? May I have a motion for adjournment, please? Councilor Ross, second. Councilor Krip, this meeting is adjourned.